Seeing a quorum of the Select Board present, I call the meeting to order for, this is the May 2nd, 2024, meeting Tuesday at the Great Hall. To order. I'm a little tired, maybe I said that twice. Okay, so, present we have Lou Gito, Debra Roberts, Scott Carrera, and also Select Board Member Joe McChrisky, as well as our Town Manager, Tom Coulter. So we're going to start with, for any who, all who are able to, to rise, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll begin the evening with Select Board comments, and I'm just going to go around from my left to my right, Mr. Gito.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank the Town Manager for the meeting we had last Wednesday on the town's debt. That was a very, very important meeting for, and I think that, that it would be a good idea for a whole lot of people in the town to take a look at that report, or that, and, from, on SMAC, and it's a little dense, you may have to look at it real carefully, but it, it certainly is, is very important. And one of the, one of the things that, that I took away from that was a piece of information that was on page five of that report. And it indicated that our 2024 debt service was 2.49% of our budget. And we were told that, at a minimum, that number would be better served if it were five, or we would be better served if it were five, and maybe up to 10. That translates into about $3 million. Oh, there you go.
That's why it's making that noise.
I think I have to just leave this down on the ground. That 2.9% represents about $3 million. So doubling that would mean that, that we would have to have, bring $3 million into our budget on the, the side where our taxes are collected, not other things that are going on. And we are not near that. So in terms of looking at the budget that we have now, our operating budget, basically the things that we, that we vote on in the general budget item, Article 15, or whatever it is this year, we need to look at that as the place where we get that additional $3 million. As I understand it, and I think the Town Manager is nodding his head, we're not close I know we're going to be discussing this later on, but that's precisely the reason that I put in the article, or my, my comments for Town Meeting. It's not that I don't like the people, it's that I think it's a responsible thing to do, to tell the people what the situation is, and where they may be able to make, make changes if they want to. It's just a discussion. It's not a sock 'em and beat 'em up. That's not the intent of, of the process. And I know that some people are not happy, but that's life, you know? I mean, if you don't, if you don't, if you don't put ideas out, and you don't put options out, then you don't move. So, thank you for the, thank you for the meeting last Wednesday, thank you for my being able to look at this, this information. I think that's a much more holistic way of looking at that. And the other thing that I would like to mention, on a different note, is that cleanup activity a couple of weeks ago went pretty well. We filled up a big truck worth of trash, and I met some really wonderful people, more on that later, some great ideas that the town could do, at very little cost, and maybe, maybe make things a little bit better. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Ms. Roberts, do you have any comments?
No, Chairman, I do not.
Thank you so much. Mr. Carrera?
I have none.
Okay. And Mr. McChrisky?
Mr. Chair, I'm just going to make this comment, is that I have so many comments in so many areas, but tonight's not the night for it. Trust me. So, I'm, there's a lot of things that could take place from some recent happenings, but I think it, I just want to let it settle down a little bit before I speak on it. Thank you.
Perfect. So, in that case, with the rest of the board having spoken, I do have a couple of comments. I, we, as many people I hopefully know at this point, we've already had our first night of Town Meeting. That was yesterday, there'll be another tomorrow. I've often expressed, at times, that my sort of reservations on Town Meeting as a form of government for us, and I, I, it's one of those things where I always sort of think, I oscillate back and forth, sometimes I think it works, sometimes I think it doesn't. Maybe that's just, you know, for lack of a perfect system, you know, we're always trying to find ways to improve. But I, the one thing I can say with, with, with absolute certainty, is that while we're in the process of going through Town Meeting, I have to say I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of the, of the participants, the process itself, our moderator has done an excellent job of, of moderating, in some cases very complicated and difficult questions to, to address, as was such a large public body. And so I just really, more than anything else, want to say that even though I sometimes have some reservations, I really appreciate all the work people are doing, and I, I do see a lot of the wisdom in this form of government, and the many, many hours, the commitment of, of people in our town to, to try to find a good path forward for the entire community, the selflessness of, of doing it too. There are many people who don't necessarily personally benefit from some of the articles and some of the issues we discuss, but the fact is that they typically, you know, regardless of what side you sort of fall on in any particular issue, the selflessness with which most people look at these questions, where they are genuinely trying to find solutions for, that, that fit best for the entire community. So I just wanted to express my, my, my thanks to all the Town Meeting Representatives, Town Moderators as well, and the Town Employees, for their work in that, in that regard. Last, oh, actually, sorry, next on our list, item number two, Town Manager Comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I've got three announcements, one is from the Veterans Office, and the other two are my own. Again, this is an announcement from the Town of Stoughton's Veterans Office, I'll read it as presented. The first set of Hometown Heroes banners have been installed. We are continuing to take applications, and we'll be placing a second order, once we have enough of, for a minimum order, and the sponsorships to cover them. If you would like more information on this program, the application and guidelines are posted on the Town of Stoughton Veterans Page, or please give the Veterans Office a call if you have any questions. As a reminder, this program is for all honorable discharged veterans, whether living or deceased, and an application in photo must be submitted. We can help with obtaining military discharge papers. We were able to fund the first order with the generous donations of several families, along with the VFW, the American Legion, Friends of Stoughton Center, and Stoughton Redevelopment Authority. Thank you for all of your support of this Hometown Heroes Banner Program. We'll be having an event at the Town Hall in June for the banner program. There will be a map showing the location of where all of the veteran banners are located, along with a short biography. Details of this event will be placed at an upcoming issue of the Town Crier. Thank you from the Veterans Office to everyone who helped make this program possible. So that's great news and a real addition to our downtown area. Mr. Chairman, I have two minor announcements. I'll be asking you, for authority, to place on the, on the agenda in the next, one of the next two meetings, a presentation from our outside order. Former Chair Lady Roberts requested this. When she was Chair, the, the auditor will come before this board in a half an hour, presentation not focused on crunching the numbers, but presenting their management page of recommendations. And I should note that those recommendations are being coordinated with the creation of our financial manual, which is being done between us and the, the Collins Center in Boston. So we'll take those recommendations from 23, from the audit, make sure they're integrated into action items in the new Policies and Procedure Manual, which you'll have late summer, early fall. Third announcement is, I'd like to present in draft form for the Board's consideration, a policy with regard to our Code of Conduct. And in that policy, it will, it'll, it'll document that the Clerk's Office will seek a signature each year to the Code of Conduct for all elected officials and appointments. If the elected officials choose not to sign them, we have no control over elected officials, then the Clerk's Office will simply make us aware of it. If an appointed official refuses to sign the Code of Conduct, we're going to recommend that notice be given to us, and that the Board consider rescinding the appointment if they're not going to sign the Code of Conduct, which would be then a stipulation of that appointment. So we'll have that too in draft form for the next meeting, for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Just as a clarifying question, the, having the, the, our external auditors provide a presentation, do you envision that sort of similar to the, the debt hearing that we've had, or other hearings where we would be a public event essentially, sort of separate from our regular meetings?
It's your choice, Mr. Chairman. It will be an open meeting, it'll be publicized and advertised, different than the one we had with our financial advisor. They won't get into the debits and credits of, of the, of the audit. As you know, as a finance person, there's a section in every audit that says management recommendations and management reports.
The most important one, really.
And it can be painful.
Yeah.
They outline where they see the deficiencies of our, of our financial management structure, and they make firm recommendations. I've always, in the private sector, found that to be very impactful and very helpful. And, and we want to make sure we're coordinating the creation of a financial policy and procedure manual with the recommendations of our honor. So it'd be more, I would call it more qualitative than it would be a quantitative presentation. But it's the, it's really the, the desire of the Board. If you want it to be an off-meeting information session, we can do that, or if it's a regular Select Board meeting, because it is a management decision-making process, where I'm sure you'll want to know what your administration is doing in terms of implementing and addressing these recommendations.
Yeah, we can discuss it.
Your call.
We can discuss it. I think that I saw a lot of value in, in the public's questions and comments, and better educating, I think, the people in the town with regard to our finances is only going to make us better at what we're doing, I think. I'm willing to hear other opinions on this, but a lot of the questions that were asked were ones that I may not have thought to ask myself, but are, were important for people to know.
One of the large stakeholder groups we would want in this presentation are employees. You know, the employees are the ones who have to implement these recommendations, and it'll probably save me months of teaching and coaching to hear them, to have them hear it from the professionals.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to second your, your view on that. I think it's important for the people in the town to hear that, have a chance to ask questions about it. I think that, that we then need to take that information and act on it, but, but having just the meeting here doesn't allow for what you were talking about.
Yeah, I think we've, we've developed a really good model for that. You, you've developed a really good model for, for engaging people in these, these efforts to examine our, our finances and, and, or what projects we're, we're looking at in the downtown, or whatever it might be. I think it's been very successful, and, and I think we can leverage that.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you want to get a vote of the members, I'll move forward in scheduling it for Thursday as an information center.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes, I would like to also encourage us to invite the School Committee, because within the audit is the total town, is the town of Stoughton's audit. And let's coordinate times and dates so they could be present as well. I think that's very important for us to continue that trend.
Yeah, so we just have to make sure to avoid one of their, their regularly scheduled meetings. No, I think this is, this sounds wonderful, and not going through the debits and credits, but, you know, maybe just explaining to people how, essentially how the balance sheet works, what is telling you, that type of stuff, it would be helpful. And you're right, the management, management, was it Managers Report?
The Report section.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the, that is hands down the most critical one, and, and having, you know, an honest, gloves-off
Independent.
Opinion, and telling us really what's working, what's not working. That's, it's important that we, we face, face it head-on, so.
Now, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, this is for the last year before I was the manager. If it's critical next year, I may not be bringing it to your attention.
Mr. Chair? Are the, are these, these financial statements, we always get a copy, but are they public, are they things that are easy to get, like on DOR?
Yes.
Oops, sorry.
No, you get a minute. We just received the audit, and the audit will be posted on Department of Local Services.
Okay. Yeah, so provide that link to people so they're able to
And we'll get it to all of you in written form and electronically.
Excellent. Mr. McChrisky, do you have any comments?
Just one, in my, in my effort to not talk about the other things, I forgot one that was important, and I just wanted to extend my thanks to the Town Manager's staff and the Select Board, on behalf of the Board of Directors at the Historical Society, that the, the renewal contract was endorsed, and I have that ready for a presentation to the Board. And during that process, I spoke with many people. I've made this known, I am the Chair of the Board of Directors for the Historical Society, and there have been a lot of people that have talked about wanting to see, you know, several things, including, you know, more hours, different events, things like that. We have embarked on a lengthy agenda that'll take some time to put together. The one that is newest is that myself and David Lambert will be going into some of the assisted care facilities with presentations that we've done in other areas. Those who don't know, our Town Historian, David Lambert, you should try to meet him sometime, because he is just amazing. And I have to do research, he just thinks about stuff and puts it on a piece of paper. So we, we have a lot of things that we've done in the past year, but these folks can't even get out. They, they can get out, but they don't, you know, they don't have access to, you know, transportation in some cases, so we're going to be doing more things like that. And some of the comments that my colleagues made regarding their concerns, I heard everything, and believe me, it, you will see some changes. It's tough with a building that's not handicapped accessible, but we've already talked about the possibility of running events like that here in the Great Hall, because it is handicapped accessible, where we have access to screens, room, restrooms, a place for, you know, some light refreshments that we can use. And ultimately, when we're able to do it, that'll be the, the main gathering point for, at the train station, for events like that, but. So I just wanted to convey that, I thought, our thanks to you all here for that, that contract and the renewal, and, you know, I'd love to hear your ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McChrisky. Mr. Town Manager, are there any other comments yet?
No, sir, that's it.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And in that case, we'll go to citizen comments. Ms. Walsh?
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. I come to praise Caesar. In the form of the DPW, for the umpteenth time, my father's memorial square sign was hit and knocked down. Within days, the staff from the DPW had not only replaced the sign, but made sure that the plantings around the base of the sign were retained. And, now, what was the second thing? And it was also the DPW. I'm trying to remember what I, what happened was, you haven't done this for a couple of weeks, and I've completely lost it.
I can't find the second thing from time to time.
I know. I got it. The good news is, slow retrieval is better than no retrieval. Obviously, I've been commenting frequently on the lack of access and the lack of railings. And I was told that in the spring, there would indeed be a railing at the seniors' center, and last month, one was installed. It's not everything I asked for, but it's certainly important to me and other seniors. And I understand from people that saw it being installed, how carefully it was done, how it didn't interfere with the use of the seniors' center. And it also shows that, for the folks that have a real low opinion of, of government in general, and low, local government also, I am immensely pleased to report that a promise was made and kept. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Walsh. So the time is 7:27. Our first public hearings scheduled for 7:30, I'm going to move a couple of things out of order. I'm going to take up item number, actually, let me just begin by saying, item number eight is an application for a trailblazer sign. The applicant has withdrawn their application, so we're not going to cover that, that item tonight at all. Just cross that off your list. Next is item 10. This is to consider a written letter of support for the Stoughton Police Department and Public Health VNA. As a public body who's involved with both setting the budget and also for signing off and voting on and signing contracts, this, this letter became, it became clear that this letter was, was necessary just to establish that the Select Board, as a public body, maintains its commitments to those, to the organizations of the town, and the police department, VNA, and so forth. And I would like to read a letter and ask if the Board would be willing to vote in favor of submitting this to Town Meeting Members. So it's two Town Meeting Members, regarding police contracts and police and VNA budgets. Good evening, Town Meeting Members. We are writing to you this evening to reaffirm the Select Board's support of the fiscal 25 police and public health VNA budgets, which were supported by a four-to-zero Select Board and Finance Committee by a vote of 12 to zero. Let's see, I'm going to change, add a little change there, four-to-zero vote of the Select Board and the Finance Committee by a vote of 12 to zero. As you know, the police department personnel are signatory to two labor unions. The command staff belongs to the Superior's Union, and the patrolmen belong to the Patrolman Union. During the summer and fall of 2023, the Town Negotiated, Negotiating Team consisted of Town Manager Coulter, HR Director Chesko, and Labor Council Federoff, engaged in good-faith negotiations with representatives of the two police unions. The union and town representatives worked collaboratively, sorry, collaboratively to reach agreement on new contracts. Let me remind you, the manager made a commitment to deliver MOUs to the Finance Committee no later than December 31st, 2023. The two sides in the negotiation process agreed to prioritize issues of employee attrition, employee recruitment, the barriers to safety, safe staffing created by civil service, the command structure, and the professional development of every police off, police department member. Both sides carefully considered each proposal, both sides agreed to meet, meet weekly in an effort to reach agreement by December 31st, 2023. Never once was there a breakdown in good-faith negotiations. The Town Negotiating Team and the union representatives agreed to execute MOUs by December 31st, 2023. Those executed MOUs were immediately transmitted to the Select Board and the Finance Committee. The Select Board voted 4-1 in support of both police MOUs. The Finance Committee voted 12 to zero in favor of both police MOUs on March 27th, 2024. All of the priorities set forth by the parties were addressed and resolved by mutual agreement. The negotiations were long, difficult, and complex. It was because of the fair dealings by both sides that agreements were reached. The Select Board stands behind its support for the police department and the contracts they were, they have earned. To reduce the value of these contracts at this very late stage may represent bad-faith dealings in the collective bargaining process. The police department and its dedicated members are doing everything asked of them to build a professional brand that will, all, that we will all be proud of. Those two police contracts will provide the tools needed to rebuild safe staffing levels, recruit high-quality candidates, and to strengthen the command staff. The Select Board strongly supports the police department members, and the contracts they negotiated encourages the Town Meeting Members to do so as well. The Stoughton Select Board further asks Town Meeting Members to support the fiscal 25 operating budgets of the Stoughton Public Health slash VNA. On January 16th, 2024, the Select Board voted 5 to 0 in support of the Public Health VNA fiscal year 25 operating budget. On March 27th, 2024, the Finance Committee Members voted 16 to 0 in support of the Public Health VNA budget. Both Select Board Members and the Finance Committee recall the enthusiastic support of the VNA during the spring 2023 Town Meeting. Recent suggestions that the Public Health VNA Department be disbanded are based on misleading financial data. In short, it has been suggested that approximately $400,000 could be saved and reinvested elsewhere if the VNA were to be disbanded. As Town Meeting Members, well-known, the Public Health VNA Department is structured as an enterprise fund. Therefore, is assigned approximately $266,807 in indirect costs. If the VNA is eliminated, those indirect costs would not be eliminated, they would be reallocated to other departments. The additional fiscal 25 structural deficit is $133,193 for both Public Health and VNA. Because the town is mandated to provide public health services, that expense cannot be eliminated. We will still need to budget approximately $150,000 for public health services. In summary, the indirect cost allocation of $266,807, and the cost of mandated public health services of approximately $150,000 exceed the structural deficit of $400,000. Putting aside the valuable services provided by our VNA, those services are paid for in full through insurance reimbursements. The VNA is actually subsidizing the public health side of the department. Given those financial considerations, and the Board's deep appreciation of the service provided by our VNA staff, the Select Board strongly supports their fiscal 25 budget and requests that Town Meeting enthusiastically demonstrate their support as well. This would be, if there's a positive vote, this, this will be voted, assigned respectfully to Select Board Members, and then our names and signatures.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Make a motion that the Select Board approve the letter as presented by you tonight?
Second?
I do want to make one small, very small edit, but it's not significant, too, it's just like a, just to clarify at the very beginning here, that, for a sentence, budgets which were supported by a vote of 4 to 0 by the budgets which were supported by a vote of 4-0 by the Select Board and the Finance Committee by a vote of... So it's by a vote of. I just want to add that.
That's no problem.
You're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so motions being seconded, is there any discussion?
I second it, yes.
Yeah. Motion was made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Ms. Roberts. So we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
I abstain. I thought you were sending me the letter.
Please use the...
I don't...
So it's the votes?
I abstain. I, I, I think you have a right and responsibility, if you choose, to send the letter. I don't agree with the contents, as you, as you well know. But, but I wouldn't vote against the letter. Why would I do that? That would, wouldn't be the right thing to do. Just you're putting out information. There you go.
Excellent. So this, the vote passes by a vote of 4-0. One abstention. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Who's... Yes?
I feel I have to bring this up now. Is that... Excuse me. We brought this letter before us in open session and voted that. Through you, to Mr. Gito, I'm extremely disappointed in your action of taking, and within 100% within your right. I'm not saying it's not, but it sure as hell slaps in the face of teamwork where you couldn't even include your colleagues on the Select Board in that email. I think it was tasteless and unprofessional. You have the total right to view your opinion at town meeting. But we all should be working together to represent all of the taxpayers. And to be left out of that email, I just think was the wrong thing to do. So that's my opinion. You can say whatever you want, but I feel that I had to say that to you because this is not what we should be doing as Select Board members of, you know, divide and conquer. So that's my words. I'm done with it, and I just felt I had to say it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I apologize to you. I, all the other three members were on the, on town meeting, and you were not. And that was my error. I, I do apologize.
Thank you.
And I, and I sent it to, to internal people within the organization who were affected by that. So you are, I think, the only one that, that I made a mistake on in that regard. And again, I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next item that we're going to take up... We only have one more item before we move into public hearings, I hope you don't mind. But the last is just the consent agenda. There's only one item on here that I felt might require additional information. That's item 9E. This is the agreement between the town of Stoughton and the local 1512, 1512 International Association of Firefighters. Background on this is that we have a memorandum of agreement between the town of Stoughton and the local 12 International Association of Firefighters, approved on April 20, 2023, and has been integrated into the collective bargaining agreement that's effective July 1, 2023. So we've already voted on that MOA. It's been integrated, so now we're simply voting on the completed, integrated collective bargaining agreement. This is going to be valid through June 30...
Mr. Chairman? I would like to see what the, what the cost implications are of this before we vote on it.
Well, this was, has been voted by the Select Board and by town meeting. So that, that was last year's agreement.
Already, I'm sorry.
And so they took that MOU and they simply combined the MOU into the, into the full agreement with the unions. So all we're doing is approving that, that integration of information.
And I, I would...
You feel good? So, so the items are, consent agenda items are: A, approval of open session minutes, meeting of April 23, sorry, yeah, 23rd, 2024, and April 24th, 2024. Item B, application for one-day alcohol beverage license, June 1, 2024, by the First Parish Stoughton, 790 Washington Street. Item C, acceptance of $213,586 donation from the Stanton Foundation for the Cape and Reynolds Dog Park. Item D, acceptance of donation up to $30,000 from the Stoughton Conservation Commission Cape and Reynolds Endowment Fund for the Cape and Reynolds Dog Park and Community Gardens. And item E, approve, sorry, that's the agreement between the town of Stoughton and the local 1512 International Association of Firefighters.
Can we pull items C and D? Mr. Terry is here, and he might like to, he might like to comment on this, and I think we should thank him.
Absolutely. Okay, so items C are, have been pulled. We'll, we'll address those after we approve the remainder of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A, B, and E?
Second.
So it was made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Ms. Carrera. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so items A, B, and E have been approved. Items C and D will now take up separately. Mr. Terry, come join us. And thank you again for all the, I know you've been on this project for a long time, dedicated to creating this dog park. And so before you go on, I just want to thank you for, for your hard work on this.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Terry. I'm a member of the Cape and Reynolds Farm Project Committee and friends of the Cape and Reynolds Farm. And I'm here to tell you that we have a bidder that is within our means. That bidder is Dandel Corporation to do the entire project. They want to start June 1. They're in the process of getting bonds ready for our procurement officer. We had a pre-award meeting with the contractor, with both procurement, engineering, and myself. And it was a very good meeting. They have done two projects very similar to this for the Stanton Foundation. One is the Abington Dog Park done in 2019. And they also did one in Yarmouth, again, for the Stanton Foundation. Stanton Foundation is a very generous corporation, and they are willing to give us $213,586 towards the dog park configuration. They also paid $25,000 to the, to the landscape architect firm of Warner-Larson to redesign it to their specifications. Their specifications are extraordinarily tight. 5% grade is considered good for ADA compliance. Their dog parks have a 3% grade, and we meet that criteria, in addition to other things. As far as the rest of the project goes, the community garden, off-street parking, and landscaping will be completed as well by Dandel Corporation, and they expect to finish by September 1. I hope the weather stays on their side. So with all that said, between the contributions from various contributors like Stanton Foundation, who also will give us 5% of that $213,000, one year after we open the dog park for maintenance, that's about $10,600. And so they have written to us in a memorandum of understanding, which Town Manager has read and has willing to sign as soon as you accept this, these gifts. So any questions?
We'll start from the side. Mr. McCrisky, do you have any questions?
I'm good. Thank you for all your work.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carrera?
Just, just one, Rich. I didn't hear the company that's doing the work.
Dandel.
Dandel.
Yeah. And they've done work in town before, along with Warner-Larson, who's well-known to the town in terms of the landscape architects' work. We've had an amazing team of Stanton Foundation who are, just want to give us money because we've done a good job. And the engineering department, with our new, newest engineer, Nick DeFrane, has really stepped up, and he's, he is the engineer for the record going forward. And as well as our point of contact, Fran Brutinetti, she has done a great job dealing with Stanton Foundation. So it's, it's been since 2016. We're going to break ground June 1, hopefully.
Excellent. Ms. Roberts?
Thank you very much, Mr. Terry, for presenting and all the hard work and effort that you do. And I know you've presented before, especially with the donations. But I just have to confirm, we have an account already set up to accept these donations, right?
I can answer that.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I met with finance the other day, and several accounts, because of the number of donations and funding sources. We have the original funding from 2016. We have $148,000 and change there. That's in a separate account. We have the most recent ATM award in 2023, which is 463. We have the $50,000 from the Cape and Reynolds, friends of the Cape and Reynolds Farm. We have $30,000 from the Conservation Commission, and also $213,586. So all of those are in unique, separate accounts, which are targeted for either all the project or specifically for the dog park. And our new finance, the secretary of finance has taken great strides to keep that very well delineated.
Do we know which accounts these are going into?
I'm sorry?
Which, which accounts would these be going into?
I'm, I didn't hear you.
That's okay. Which accounts would these be going into?
The $213,000 will go into the dog park. That's specifically for the dog park by the Stanton Foundation.
Sorry, you were still asking questions, so I apologize.
That's okay.
Ms. Roberts?
I'm all set. You answered my question as long as we have the account set up and we don't need to take another motion to set one up.
They're all set up.
Okay.
Thank you.
In a good place. Thanks.
Mr. Gito, we've got a couple more, sorry. Mr. Gito, do you have any questions or comments?
Richard, um, thank you very much. You, it sounds like there's close to a million dollars that have come in from, from the work that, that you and your group have done. And that's, that's really huge.
We have more money than we need, and we'll be able to return some of the CPC money back to the town because of the donations that came in from those other sources. So that's a nice thing, too.
It's a good problem to have. Was there one more before you go, Mr. McCrisky? Do you have any?
Thank you, Richard. Just one. What is the total funding now available for the dog park? I know that CPC had put a good chunk of change in there, and I understand that just kind of went into sitting, so...
The, the total winning bid right now for the entire project, dog park, community garden, landscaping, ADA complacency, and off-street parking, is $644,000 and change. That was the winning bid. That's Dandel Corporation. The funding that has been provided by the town meeting is $148 from the original $275, and then $463,000. We purposely raised the, the monies that were, the level of money, 21% from two years ago when we got a bid that we couldn't, we couldn't afford. It was $548,000 for the project. We didn't have enough money. And so we came back to town meeting in 2023, added 21% for cost of goods and inflation, and that would have brought us to $663,000. The winning bid came in at $644,000, so we were below that. Plus, we have a buffer of all the contributions I just described. So with all of that, we should be able to return some monies to CPC.
That's great.
And we may not use all the money from Conservation, because it's up, their, their language is up to $30,000. And so we're anticipating to be able to return some monies to both CPC and Conservation, or not use that money.
You don't hear that often. We're going to be turning money back, so that's a great thing. When, and I know it's hard to have a crystal ball, do you have any projection of your wishes of when you would like to see this project completed? Because I do notice, I read social media quite often. I just, I'm smart enough to not post, so...
I understood. I'm in the same ballpark.
With that, there are a lot of people that would have talked about it, and it's a great project, but would like to know roughly when you can see it being worked on.
Well, in our pre-award meeting with Dandel Corporation, he wants to, they, they want to start June 1. They want to complete it by September 1.
Great.
And that was part of our meeting last Wednesday.
Great. Beautiful. That's something that'll hit social media. It's positive. That's good. Thank you.
And I, we have a lot of confidence in this, this particular contract because of the work that he had done for Stanton Foundation, which is extraordinarily demanding. But if you meet their demands, the money will flow. As a matter of fact, as soon as the Town Manager signs that MOU and Fran sends it off to Stanton Foundation, they will cut a check for the entire amount prior to executing a purchase order and a proceed order. So we'll have the money before we even give a contract out.
Great. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I think, I think that's it. Thank you so much, Mr. Terry.
Thank you, Richard.
So on consent agenda items C and D, is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Mr. Carrera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. This passes unanimously. That, that concludes the, the regular business of our Select Board meeting for tonight, but we have public hearings for, since our vice chair has extensive experience with public hearings. Our practice is going to be, and has been and will continue to be, that overseeing our public hearings. For the sake of, of this section of the, of the meeting, he will be the acting chair, and all comments should go through him. Mr. Carrera, you have the gavel.
Just for notification, we will read the charge. I will ask for a motion to open the hearing or reopen the hearing. We'll bring the petitioners up, let them say their side. I'll open it up to my members to ask questions. If the people need to retort, they can. We'll go back to the members, out to the audience, vote to close the hearing, then make the final vote. So that's how it's going to go, and I don't want anybody talking over another person. I don't want anybody standing up in the audience. You will have your chance to speak if needed. So please abide by these rules. Chairman Cavey, we have the 7:30 continuance of the public hearing for the renewal of the cable license for Verizon New England. And I'll yield to you to speak on that because I guess the information has not been provided to us enough to move forward with it. And then we'll make a decision on whether we have to reorg, re-advertise to, to set it.
Vice Chair Carrera, thank you very much. I know that we have the attorney addressing this online. Before recognizing him, my understanding is that we received the contract earlier today. I think there might be some elements that still need some additional work. I could be wrong about that. But regardless, there's not enough time for the Select Board to review those comments and to review that contract. And so I think it's in the best interest to continue this public hearing until after we are able to review those documents, even with, with Mr. Solomon on the line. I make a motion that we continue the public hearing. Actually, we have to open the public hearing first. Let's start with that. But I will make a motion to continue it until May 21 at 7:30.
Do you want to open it?
I move that we open the public, actually, we have to read, read, right?
Well, we already, we already read it when we continued it the last time.
It was advertised.
I'll read it again.
Yeah, read the advertisement, then I'll open the public hearing.
The Select Board, as the Cable Television's License issuing authority for the town of Stoughton, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 23, which we opened and closed and continued to tonight. And it's, it's for the meeting to...
I'm sorry, this is actually, we've, we've already continued this once.
Yeah.
I apologize. So this is a motion to continue the public hearing
Right.
from April 23, 2024. I move that we continue the public hearing again until May 21, 2024 at 7:30 PM. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a, a motion and a sec. Where'd Joe go?
Could, could I?
Yes.
If we're going to continue this, instead of... If we're going to continue this, instead of having it the first item on the agenda, I would suggest that when it's put on the agenda, it be put further on unless we have, we're assured that we have all the information that we need, so that we don't have to dance around for 20 minutes like we've had to do in the past.
I agree with that. I think that we can always have the public hearing later, the 7:30, but if we set it later and we're done with all of the materials, then we have to...
Maybe we should put that one at 7:30, and maybe we should put one at 7:35, so that we can...
Fair enough. But the motion's been made and seconded, Mr. Vice Chair.
Do you want to add Lou's?
No, we don't need to do that.
Administrator?
It's just, yeah.
All right. All in favor of the continuance to May 21st?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Joe? Joe says aye. It's unanimous. Joint Polls. A public hearing will be held by the Board of, the Select Board on Tuesday, May 7th, 2024, at 7:50 PM to consider the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., who are requesting permission to locate polls, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way, West Street. Install one JO poll on 1404 West Street, beginning at the point approximately zero feet north of the center line of the intersection of Westview Drive and Gibson Way, and continuing approximately 40 feet in the north direction, National Grid, to relocate poll 10940 south towards poll 10. Project number 30861104. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass., and/or virtually on via Google meets and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and live stream. Google meets video link and telephone connection for the public comment available for calling the Select Board office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email gparreira@stoughtonmass.gov. I'll entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's open. And who do we have from National Grid tonight?
Online, we have, looks like Jared from National Grid.
Yes. How are you guys?
Good, Jared. Would you like to explain for everybody in depth what this poll is going to situate and what it's going to serve us?
Also, please turn your camera on if you're able.
Oh, my computer doesn't have an active camera, sorry. However, this poll for 1404 West Street, it's relocating poll 109. My understanding is that it's for a concerned customer that a pole is in the middle of their yard, so we're getting that out of the way for them. This poll is just part of the poll line that carries the overhead conductors down the street.
Okay, we're going to have some discussion from Mr. Gito.
Mr. Carrera, the information that we have on this project is absolutely incorrect. I've been working with the, with a town engineer last week on it, sent him some information. He's been trying to contact National Grid and get proper information. The intent is to move the pole that's in the middle of the lot at, I think it's 1409, if I'm not mistaken. The owner is Stephen and his wife, Rob, R-A-B-B, I believe. And it's unfortunate that this hasn't been able to be resolved, because he would like to be able to do work in the area. But the pole is across the road from where it's shown, and it's right in the middle of the driveway. And it's supposed to move down toward the pond, about 40 feet. And I had hoped that we would have been able to get corrected information, but that's not available. They absolutely numbered the poles going the wrong way, had the wrong numbers on poles. I mean, at some point in time, we should let National Grid of Verizon, whoever's dealing with this, know that this is not acceptable. I mean, we have a whole lot of other hearings here tonight. I don't know if they're, if they have the same problems or not. The only reason I know this is because I live a quarter of a mile away, and I looked at it and started looking at the numbers on the poles. It's crazy.
Thank you. I'm going to read in the information that came from our offices within Town Hall. And we have that Fire has approved it, the police approved it, Public Works approved it, and then Engineering checked off, and it says, "The sketch and the narrative submitted contains mistakes and discrepancies which make the application difficult to understand," which is what Mr. Gito just pointed out. However, based upon our understanding of the issue, we believe the intent of the application is to remove existing utility poll 109 and install a new utility poll, 109, 40 feet to the south, which would place the new poll at approximately the lot line and out of the proposed driveway location for 1409 West Street. It is our assertion of proposal is correct. We would not have any objections to the new poll located at, that described above. Is it our understanding, I'm going to ask the town manager, that there's going to be a new plan entered at some time to help us with this?
You're 100% correct. Our engineer, Craig, has gone out there. He will design or submit a new set of plans, an accurate set of plans, thanks to Mr. Gito's involvement. So it's really the choice of the board. Do you choose to approve it conditionally upon the receipt of that new plan, or if you would like to put this hearing off to a future date?
I'll entertain from, Mr. Cavey would like to speak, then. Mr. Gito raised his...
Sorry, I was actually pointing over there.
Joe?
I'm okay.
All right. Joe?
Do we know whose poll is this, Verizon or Grid?
National Grid's installing it.
Yeah, National Grid's installing it, okay. So the pole that is being replaced, is that the one that is stopping the rabs from moving forward? Is that a grid pole? Okay, so they're responsible for both. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gito?
I think in fairness to the, to the people who want to get the poll moved, that we should, we should approve it conditionally upon, on what our understanding is, that poll 109 is going to move south. Poll 109 is not on the side where 1404 is.
Right.
And it is what, what the engineering department said it was.
Before, before we take that vote, I'm going to go to the, the public, and if we see nothing, then I'll accept them. And if we have to say something to Jared, what we're going to do on this, then he'll know, and we can submit some stuff to him so that they'll understand, and next time it'll be right. So is there, is there anybody in the audience or online that would want to comment on this application?
Can I comment?
My name is Stephen Rapp.
Come up, come up here, sir, and just press the button on the mic and talk into it. Pull it a little bit closer to you.
Stephen Rapp, 1409 West Street.
Yeah.
Good evening. I wanted to just thank you all for hearing the petition and kind of maybe clarify things, because I am very familiar with it. Excuse me. I have not seen the application that was submitted to the town, so I'm not aware of its inaccuracies. But from what I've heard from the reading and from the revised statement that you read, the application is supposed to request to move the poll 40 feet south. And I don't know where the application shows the poll is actually situated now. Thank you. But I can tell you that it is on the west side of the street. I think 1404 West Street is the farm that's on the east side of the street, and my lot is actually on the west side of the street.
Right.
The poll is on, I guess, my lot's side of the street. As a result of setbacks from the wetlands, from the lot lines, and the, and the street, and the building envelope that we had to build this house, the poll number 109 happens to just line up dead center in the middle of the driveway.
I drove by that the other day, and I says, "This is not, not good." And then Steve explained it to me.
And so we've, I've been petitioning through the utility company since October to get this done, and we finally have made it here, which I'm grateful for. And we're at a point now where certain parts of the project are at a standstill, kind of waiting to get moving. We need, we need to get services to the house and...
Right.
...so we can do things. And so I'm not, again, I'm not familiar with exactly the petition itself, but I can reassure the board that the poll, the request is to move the bolt to poll south, which would be on the lot lines as described in the revision. And that way, we can have a clear driveway and been assured by the utilities that no services will be obstructed to any of the residents or anything like that.
Yeah. You're going to get that tonight. Mr. Gito made some good information, and we're going to get backup from the engineering department, and then it'll get moved.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Is it okay if I jump in here for one second?
Yeah, go ahead, Jared.
So my notes do reflect similar information that the poll is to be moved 40 feet south towards poll 110. It appears that there was, you know, a human error, as there is, no doubt. Definitely proceed as you guys need to. We completely understand that. Apologize for any, any confusion that this has caused, but my notes reflect the, what your engineers were saying as 40 feet south of its location towards poll 110.
Thank you. Now I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Yes.
Do you still want, since the notes concur with what the gentleman is looking for, do you still want the new set of plans created?
To have them on file, yes.
Yes, sir.
And it's, it's not like a panic now.
Okay.
Everybody understands, so when we get them, we'll have them put in the folder for file.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Vice Chair, I move that we approve the National Grid and Verizon, New England Joint Poll Petition, project number 30861104, West Street, and that contingent upon the engineering department signing off on the plans.
As Mr. Gito stated.
Yep.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I'll go with Joe. You heard it first. Sorry. So we got a second, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. So that's all set. Thank God. You're all set.
Thank you for your patience.
England, Joint Poll. I'll read the charge. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Tuesday, May 7th, 2024, at 8 o'clock PM to consider the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., who are requesting permission to locate polls, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way, Tosca Drive. It'll be install one JO poll on 28 Tosca Drive, beginning at the point of 15 feet west of the center line. Install new midspan 45-foot C1H1 with a secondary riser. Install a 3-50 kilo VA XF MR wired 277/480Y fused at 15K. Project number 30900087. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, third floor Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass., and/or virtually on via Google meets and may broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and live stream. Google meets video link, telephone connection for public comment available by calling Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email gparreira@stoughtonmass.gov. I'll entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. McCrisky and a second from Ms. Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's open. Jared, do you want to speak on this one, too?
Yes, sir. So this one is for a midspan poll that we need to add three transformers in order to power an EV truck, right, Chair, for the customer at 28 Tosca Drive. There's no, there's no, sorry, looking at my notes. There's no surrounding poles that would allow us to just simply add them on, making this the cheapest, most efficient way to do it.
Okay. Before I ask the members, I will read the, the information that came from the Town Hall departments. Fire has approved it, police has approved, Public Works has approved, and Engineering has checked for approval. And there's no seditious comments that say anything different. So I'll open it up to my group. Does anybody have anything they want to add to this?
Nope.
Nothing. Does the public have anything they would like to add to this? I'll entertain a moment to close.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's the wish of the board?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. That one's done. Good to go. We're catching up. We have another public hearing, 8:10, National Grid and Verizon, New England, Joint Poll. We have another public hearing, 8:10, National Grid and Verizon New England Joint Pole Petition for Project 27359884 Central Street. "A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Tuesday, May 7, 2024, at 8:10 PM to consider the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., who are requesting permission to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protective fixtures along the, across the following public way, Central Street. Install one SO pole on Central Street. Relocate one SO pole on Central Street, beginning at the point of 150 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Canton Street and continuing approximately 125 feet in the east of the direction, relocate pole 82 and remove pole 81. This is project 27359884. The hearing will be held, conducted in the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass. and/or virtually and via Google meets and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and live stream. Google meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email gparreira@stoughtonmass.gov." Do I have a motion to open the hearing, please?
Summate.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Go ahead, Jared.
So these pole removal and relocations are us working with DOT for the reconfiguration of this intersection. So these are, these are pretty much DOT's plans that, that we're implementing.
Thank you. We have information from our departments. Fire has approved. Police has approved. Public Works has approved and Engineering has approved. And we have a, a design schematic in the packet. Is there anybody from the board who has wished something to say? Seeing none, I'll move to the audience. Oh, yes, Mr. Gito.
Through you to the representative.
Yes.
Do you have these poles located in GIS format so that the town would know where these things are and be able to locate them and also identify them? The reason I ask the question is that, that we got a really badly put together plan and we're looking at these. I don't know whether or not we, these others are, are good or bad. And there, there needs to be a way to, to have a sense that, that you've in fact checked on the information that you're, you're getting to us. So I don't know if you can answer that tonight, but I think that we should know how this works. I mean, if, if we don't know where the poles are and what you're really doing, then we're just sitting here playing around.
Thank you.
So I'm not totally clear on, on, on what you're asking. I know your town has a GIS website.
Let him finish, Lou, and then tell him.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Lou. Are you done, Jared?
I, I, I'm not fully grasping your, your question.
What, what Mr. Gito is stating is when you guys put the plan together, do you have accurate location, when you're putting the plan together, that the engineer is actually using actual location? And is there a, he was wondering if GIS will locate these or how do you do it afterwards?
I see. Okay. Yeah, so, so for me personally, I use, I use the town's website for all their lot lines and I, and I cross-reference their town website information with, with our database and, and like, say, Google Satellite images. If I, you know, if something's off, I can go out and measure and readjust it and everything. I can't speak to what every designer for my company does. I just know that's what, that's what I do. So, so the, so for me, the petitions that come in are based off of a combination of usually satellite imaging, field, field site visits and the town's actual GIS website itself.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Gito?
The town's website, I don't think, contains the pole locations. And that's really what I think when the, the town, the town, I think, has access to the fire department, I think has access to some of that information. But I know when I go to the engineering department and Kristin pulls up stuff on the computer, it's the GIS stuff that Larry GIS, they call him, put it in. And he has remarkably marked a lot of poles. So when they pull a tie off a pole for a location of a sore stub, they're actually on the plan. So it's, I think he's entered a lot of that stuff in. So if he's pulling it from our site, it might be that we're, we're truer than they are right now. Well, it shouldn't be that way. I mean, it's their information and they should know where that is. I, I guess we should just, I don't know how we do this. Let, let's do it offline and not, not here.
Okay.
But it seems to me that the National Grid.
It's a good question, for sure.
Should have, should have a good database on their, on their infrastructure. And we should be pulling from them the proper information. If they don't give us the proper information, it makes me wonder whether or not they have a good information system. But we, we shouldn't be here.
Guessing.
Just going through the motions, I don't think.
I do know that when these are done and the new poles are up, they have to submit information to the town clerk's office to show that there's a, a proper as-built and truism to attest. I do know that, that. So, and I think that has to walk its hands through engineering too. So there is, there is, after we're done, we sort of know, I guess. All right. So anybody in the public? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Summate.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wish of the board?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Gito. And we have 6D is National Grid and Verizon New England Joint Pole Petition Project Number "A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Tuesday, May 7, 2024, at 8:20 PM to consider the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., who are requesting permission to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way, Canton Street. Install one JO pole on Canton Street, beginning at the point of 0 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Central Street and continuing approximately 530 feet in a southeasterly direction. Relocate five poles. Install one new pole on Canton Street. Project Number 27359884. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass. and/or virtually and via Google meets and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and live stream. Google meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email gparreira@stoughtonmass.gov." Motion to open the hearing, please?
Summate.
I have a, a motion and a second by Mr. Gito. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, Jared.
So this is a continuation, is my understanding of this DOT project for the reconfiguration of this intersection. So same, same rules of the game apply here where I'm working with DOT to get their plans in sync with our system.
I have information from our departments. Fire has approved. Police has approved. Public Works has approved. Engineering has a check mark and it says approved with the recommendations, recommended restrictions. Per site meeting with the Mass DOT, Peter Ventresco and Mark Tisdale, it was great to move the existing pole 53 feet further south in order to keep the location of the pole located on 587 Canton Street, which will be upgraded and a new guide wire will be installed. Did, did you get that information, Jared, from anywhere?
That was not delivered to me. Um, let's see. Would, would we be able to get that sent over to our clerk?
I, I think you can.
Okay.
Jilda, are you able to send that? Yes. Our secretary will handle that, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, I'll go out to the public. Anybody have any questions or comments? I don't see any. Motion to close the meeting?
Summate.
I, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wish of the board?
Motion to approve is submitted, or presented, rather.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All done.
Was that 6D?
Six, six. What's that?
We just did item 6 Delta.
Yep.
I think we've got to wait two minutes for the next one.
We got a few minutes. Do you want to do something else, Steve?
Yeah. Actually, do we have anything else?
Nothing, nothing to do.
We could do the.
Consent?
Do that.
You did that?
That's probably going to take a little time.
What do you do? Call it first?
Yeah, call it first. It's taking two minutes recess if you want.
It's supposed to be 8:40. It's more than two minutes.
We have, we on 8:30? Yeah, so this would be kind of. Why can't we proceed at 8:40?
What's that?
This doesn't go at 4:00. Can't we proceed at 8:40?
Too efficient.
It's, it's got to be the advertised time.
But that's two minutes.
It's 8:40. Ten minutes. We used to do it before. Keep that offset.
Eight forty is the polls. Eight fifty, yeah, yeah, we should. Yeah, that's the last poll thing. Oh. And then we'll have to take.
Sorry, Dolores. Can we help you?
Yes. Did, did we do item, you know, the one that's scheduled for 8:50 for the Canvas events? Did we do that one?
Not yet. That's the, that'll probably be our final order of business. So we still have 6E and 6F.
Okay.
We're unable to start the public hearing on 6D until 8:30. So we have about a minute left.
Thank you.
And then we'll, we'll go to seven after that and that'll be the last order of business.
Thank you.
Okay. 8:30. Good to go.
We have, we have two left National Grids and this is National Grid New England Joint Pole Petition Project Number 27359884, Tosca Drive. "A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Tuesday, May 7, 2024, at 8:30 PM to consider the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., who are requesting permission to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way, Tosca Drive. Relocate one JO pole on Tosca Drive, beginning at the point of 40 feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Central Street and continuing approximately 0 feet in a northerly direction to relocate pole number one, Tosca Drive, Project 27359884. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass. and/or virtually and via Google meets and may broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and live stream. Google meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email gparreira@stoughtonmass.gov." Motion to open the hearing?
Summate.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Go ahead, Jared.
All right. So this one is number three. That's going to be following the same DOT plans for that intersection widening and everything up. Just going to push it back down to Tosca Drive. Open up a little bit more room for DOT there.
Okay. Is there any member of the board have anything they would like to ask on this petition? Seeing none, I'll go to the public. Anybody online or in the public? I'll entertain a motion to close the hea—oh, Cynthia. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. In the future, if all of these projects are, not all of them, but several of them seem to involve Mass DOT and the project that's going on at Tosca and Canton Central, it seemed to me it'd be more sensible to have them all grouped together so that if someone in that area was interested, they would, they would come.
We just had that discussion tonight, Cynthia. We're way ahead of you.
Well, and the other thing is, in the future, it might make sense only to put five minutes between each of these rather than 10.
That's exactly what Mr. Cavey said. And I remembered when I was on the board before, we used to chunk them together so that we could move through them. It's, the repetitiveness, it's killing me.
Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll try to be better every week. I think we're going to reexamine the way that we advertise these, make sure that we can get through them faster.
All right.
This poor guy has to read. War and peace over here.
All our departments, fire, police, public works and engineering have checked off and there's no sidebars to anything. So I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Wish of the board?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. Now we'll do the last one.
We got to wait about six minutes.
Six minutes. Do you want to take a break?
Yeah, we'll take a six-minute recess.
Take a six-minute break. Thank you.
We'll be back at 8:40 on the dot. Vice Chair Carrera, floor is yours again.
Thank you, Chairman Cavey. This is the last one on poles. National Grid Verizon New England Joint Pole Project Number 27359884, Central Street. "A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Tuesday, May 7, 2024, 8:40 PM to consider the joint petition of National Grid and the Verizon New England, who are requesting permission to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way, Central Street. Install two JO poles on—" Install two JO poles on Central Street, beginning at the point of 75 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Island Street, and continuing approximately 900 feet in an easterly direction, installing two new poles, and relocate six poles for project number 27359884. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass. And/or virtually and via Google meets and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access, television, and live stream. Google meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, at extension 9212, or email gparreira@stoughtonmass.gov. Motion to open the meeting, the hearing?
So made.
And I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, Jared.
This is the last one for the night for this DOT plan, is my understanding. So, in case anybody forgot in that break, we have, we have our work with DOT to widen that intersection near Tosca, Central, and Canton Street.
Do any of my board members have any questions on this one? We have information from the departments. Fire has approved, police has approved, public works, and engineering, and there are no side comments restricting anything. Is there anybody in the public who would wish to comment either on, on line or in the audience? I'll entertain a motion to close. I have a motion, second from Mr. McCrisky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's the wish of the board?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All set. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, guys. Have a nice night.
We're early again, Steve.
Great last item of business, item number seven.
It's not a hearing.
Yeah, that's right. It's not a time. This is a waiver request under section 31 of the Town of Stoughton Select Board Alcoholic Beverage Licensing Regulations, the Canvas Events LLC, 603 Washington Street. Approach? And when you talk, just make sure that's green and it's a little close to you.
Okay. There you go. Thank you again for having us and hearing us.
The floor is yours. You...
So, we've been open for a few months now. We've had the lease at the location for going on a couple of years. So, now is the time that we've actually been able to start conducting business. And what we've figured out in the line of business that we have in getting reservations and things ahead of time, being able to have a license would help us, you know, coordinate and be more efficient rather than getting bookings and then looking for the daily licenses. So, just to make everything more efficient for ourselves and our business is the reason why that we're looking for this exception.
Do you want to say anything?
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yes.
I think it would be helpful to hear a bit about their business, if you would...
Yeah. That's what I was waiting for. Tell us a little bit about the business.
Hi there. My name is Stephanie. Pretty much, we host different styles of events. We have different relationships throughout the city of Boston where we originate out of, with different professional companies. We host holiday events for them, different networking events. And throughout our doing this, we've always had to seek out other locations to bring them to and have other vendor relationships instead of having our own space. So, now we're fortunate enough to, as my business partner stated, have had this location for several years at this point. And with the different clientele that we've now expanded to, some being these professional employees, some wanting to have celebrations, birthday celebrations, wedding receptions, so much so even repasses have since been held at our space. What we find are some limitations when it comes to the clientele's needs. It's a little bit tough for us to meet their needs when we are unable to offer them a full service option. So, therefore, we lose business, they go to other locations, and as stated, we've been there for a couple of years, and the overhead is definitely hefty. So, we're here at this point just to kind of let you guys know what it is that we do do. We host different things. We've done a few things thus far in the space, networking stuff. For Women's History Month, we hosted a ladies lounge. We had historical women, information about them. We had women come in. It was a really good turnout. People in the community attended in, and they found it to be definitely something that they act that we do more often. So, with that being said, we're here to just let you guys know that we do have a need, and hopefully you can work with us on meeting that.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board members? Mr. McCrisky, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I need to know a little bit more, other than events. What is your primary source of business?
At the location?
Yes. You're asking for a waiver of a license at this location. What is your... You've got to give me a lot more information. I need to know what your business is. Are you serving food? Is there a kitchen there? You know, what are you doing other than just... You gave me a really small...
So, we are an event space, a function hall, so to speak, what most may have considered it as. We have catering relationships with vendors, so should someone want to host a wedding reception there, they will get their caterers, or we will connect them to caterers that we have relationships with, who then have licenses that come in and serve the food at the location. And we have relationships with different design companies, decorators, coordinators. So, our relationship does spread pretty wide. So, in a sense of catering aspect, we have different relationships with different catering groups. But preferentially, whoever is hosting an event at our location may have their own selection as to who they want to cater their event. So, if it comes to serving food, we have a kitchenette. We don't have a full kitchen. So, what caterers will do is come in and prepare the food, as in like set it up and plate it, and serve it in that manner. Buffet style is also an option that clientele have opted to use.
Restrooms?
We have three, including a handicap accessible one, yes.
Okay. Parking?
After 5 o'clock, we are able to use the parking lot at 100% capacity.
Okay. What about during, before 5 o'clock?
So, before 5 o'clock, we don't normally host large events. And on weekends, when we typically do host most of our events, by 1 o'clock, the lot is pretty empty. The bank, which is our nearing neighbor, is closed.
The occupancy, what is the occupancy of that place?
147, just under 150.
And what is the largest event you've run?
Uh, 110.
Okay. Typically, what would you say your busiest timeframes are?
Evening hours, preferably, highly likely, it's typically between 7 and 11:30. I'll tell you, we've successfully hosted some events, of course, with the restrictions of not having, you know, all the options available to clientele, but we've successfully hosted events there and have a demand at this point, but we are kind of stuck.
Well, I don't, I don't know what I'm going to do. This is something we don't have to do, my colleagues. If I may add as well... I just don't know... I have the floor right now, sorry. I don't see this as the future for our town. I'm open to conversation on the issue, but you all know my position, and I don't think alcohol ever makes a business. It adds it. And we have not had, recently, we've had some, some issues with parties. And an alcohol license is to serve the good of the residents of the town, not to bring business in from other towns, but to serve there. We have plenty of liquor licenses within the Town of Stoughton to serve the residents of the town. So, I think we've got to always remember, it serves the good of the public. And that's the public of the residents of the Town of Stoughton. That's why we issue those licenses. And when we issue licenses, or in this case amend a policy, to do such a thing, I think we're opening up the floodgates. And I believe that we have enough liquor locations in town. We have nonprofits that are in town. We have civic organizations in town. There's definitely, you know, enough to serve the residents. We have plenty of function halls in this town right now, as we know, and they're not full at capacity. And allowing another alcohol location to open up, I think, is going to further challenge those people that are in town now just trying to make a living. So, I don't see the value of this. I don't plan on voting for it, but I'm willing to hear everybody else on the board. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky.
Can I make a point?
No, no. I got to go through my board first. I said, no, I didn't want any... I allowed you, but please let me go through here first. Mr. Cavy?
Yeah, so let's have a couple of questions. And pretty straightforward. One is, I just want to make sure I understand the location. I know where the Citibank is. I sort of generally know that plaza. And I think you're going to be in one of the, you are currently in one of the buildings that are sort of set back in front of the parking lot. If you're facing it, is it the larger one on the left or the smaller one on the right?
Smaller one on the right.
Smaller one on the right. So, it's, I'm looking at, there's a picture from September 2023 on Google Maps, and at the time, that was, that was, looked like an empty, empty location. So, that's, that's one. I know there's a couple of names, organizational names, that I just want to make sure I understand the connection between them. There's the Remy Group, and there's also Canvas Events LLC. I know Canvas Events LLC was incorporated in October of 2023, so last year, but you mentioned you've been leasing the building since September of 2021. Is it Remy Group that's been leasing that building during that time period, or this other, or the Canvas Group, Canvas Events?
Canvas Group is a subsidiary of Remy Group. So, Remy Group is the parent company, and then Canvas LLC is what we use just for the function hall.
Would you mind moving that? Please use the mic.
No worries.
Okay. And so, the property is owned by Canvas Group, by, sorry, Remy Group, is leased by, or leased by Remy Group.
Correct.
And you also mentioned that there's a nonprofit involved as well. Is that under Remy Group, or is there some, a separate nonprofit?
The nonprofit is not, we didn't mention a nonprofit being involved with this.
Okay. And I think in the application, there's a mention that, like the bottles and cans are donated to that, to that nonprofit?
We donate a lot of the materials that they then recycle and get whatever chains, whatever.
They're not using the location?
Nope.
Okay. Perfect.
Hang on.
Sure.
Did you say you had an application?
It's part of the package that's available online. It's under item seven. There's a letter that begins with, to whom...
I have a letter. I didn't know if you had a, an application for a liquor license.
No, no. So far as I'm aware, what we're doing right now, there's, there is a request, a letter to...
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because I didn't have it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I used the wrong term in this case, yeah. Just, there's no application, but there's this letter requesting a waiver to this, to So, it sounds like you've been, you've been in business for a while, but this is, this specific organization, the Canvas Event LLC, is relatively new. Has it read through your, your bylaw, I think it's the bylaws, a set of rules and requirements, and some of the details above? There are aspects of it that I found vague and a little bit hard to interpret, and references to, you know, business clientele. Like, I don't really know what that, that means necessarily. There's a lot of different types of business. I don't know if it's like corporate events, or small businesses, or, or what it might be. So, if you could sort of fill in some of those, that area, it'd be helpful.
So, for example, what I was, what I've learned is that you guys hosted your holiday event not too far from here.
Yeah.
So, clients of such. We have clients like John Hancock, State Street, that we can host holiday events for. So, let's just say, should we have had this, you know, space opened in December, we would have gladly been able to offer it up for your Christmas event that you guys hosted.
So, you've answered all my questions, and I appreciate that. I will say that since the request that we're currently getting is just a, essentially the, the right to apply for an alcohol, liquor license, an alcohol license. I feel comfortable with where we are to move forward with this and grant this request, and this is just to the board. When we get to that phase, there'll be, I think, a much more robust examination of what exactly you guys are doing and so forth. But at this point, everything you presented is very similar to, similar businesses that are doing this, for which we've granted these, these requests. And, and I don't, I haven't seen anything that would lead me to believe that you're, you're outside of that scope. Additionally, we have a lot of storefronts in town that are either empty, and/or, I've got nothing against churches, but they tend to be filled with a lot of churches, and we have a lot of nonprofits that are using up our storefronts and using those locations. And I think that the better use would be something sort of similar to what you're describing, if possible. So, I'd like to be able to examine that as part of a liquor license request and have police and fire and our Board of Health sort of weigh in with any sort of logistical concerns that they might have on it. And so, for the sake of the board, at this time, at the time, I, I tend to be a little bit more liberal about these things, but I do think that this is, would, has potential to be a very good opportunity for the town. So, thank you very much for considering the town and for coming here. I have no further questions, Mr. Vice Chair.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Carrera. Hello and thank you and welcome. I do have a couple of questions, and it's regarding, how long have you been at that location? That's at 603 Washington Street. And I also wanted to ask, were you aware of our, our requirements to obtain a liquor license when you first started? So, it's, is this request something that you just, someone just told you about after you've been in business at that location for a period of time? Or did you know from inception?
We were aware of what the process would be in order to gain the license, but we faced an innumerable amount of challenges getting open. And we were told that without an occupancy permit, we would not be able to even submit the application. So, that was kind of part of the holdup. We modified the building. When we initially leased it, there was 188 bathroom in there. We've done extensive construction. Now there are two additional bathrooms in there. The building has been completely brought up to code and standards to have gotten us this occupancy permit, thus the delay on us even changing the, you know, solidifying the business name and beginning this process. So, until we had that, we were not able to proceed. Thus why we were not able to have many functions there. Thus why we have been paying an overhead for several years up until December, where we started to actually have functions.
We've been having clients since December. We've been open for about two years here, paying rent, paying the taxes and everything else as such, and doing our part as, you know, citizens of the town, trying to participate in a profitable way. Small business owners, we're not big companies here, we're just looking to be able to compete. I do find it disheartening to come into the Town of Stoughton to hear that, you know, you don't see a future in what we're doing. Small businesses look for, you know, any opportunity to grow. I have a nine-to-five. My sister has a nine-to-five. I have a nine to five. My sister has a nine to five. These are things that we do just, just to build within the community and build ourselves. To the aspect of just catering to the community, we do that as well, to think that it's not just open to outside communities. I know we have a, a gun shop in the town. I'm sure that the gun shop, I live in Milton, I drive there. I know people who drive from Brockton to other towns. The point being is that just because we're in Stoughton, doesn't mean that we're just, you know, providing services to the people of Stoughton, which we do, but it's to people outside of Stoughton as well. And it's been kind of a handicap, in a sense, just trying to compete with, you know, neighboring towns, Brockton, Milton, Canton, people who have the licenses, and not being able to secure, you know, bookings. So when we do have bookings and people say, hey, do you have a liquor license? And we can't guarantee that, that's usually, you know, a bargaining chip that we don't have. And, and we're not, we do understand, I've done my research in the town of Stoughton, there's been, you know, some, some liquor issues, some problems with people going astray. And, and we definitely make sure that we could accommodate, whether it's security, whether it's details, we're open to have the, you know, have that conversation. It's not a nightclub. We're not looking to open another bar. We're just looking to be able to run a profitable business in a respectful manner as well.
Thank you.
So my-
Go ahead, Deb.
Second, second question. You are renting this location.
Correct.
You rented this location with the intent to have a function hall-
Correct.
-all along.
Mm-hmm.
But you were aware that there were some requirements that we, that the board and the town abides by in order to give out the liquor license?
We were.
I just wanted to make sure that everything was transparent, there was nothing hidden from you. And like one of my fellow board members stated, if someone says, no, you could probably understand why, because these regulations were developed for a reason, right? And you're expressing to us why you would like to have an exception to that regulation.
Correct. And just, just to add some emphasis as to, you know, why we do seek it. With the extensive expenses of the modifications that we had to do to the space in order to even make it to an occupancy permit, adding a kitchen was going to add a far more, far much more to the costs. So it didn't make sense for us budgetary-wise, after paying a lease for three years, in a space that we were unable to use. So it was more effective to do what was the bare minimum, which was a kitchenette, and ensure that we did have the bathrooms installed and up to code, thus leading us here today.
Yes?
Oh, go ahead, Deb. Do you have more?
I was just going-
Lou, do you have anything you would like to add?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I was struck in the middle of your first page, where you, you said that, that you were having difficulty getting, getting things done, or, or doing things that the town wanted. And then you, I was going to ask you the question, what did you have done? And you said that you, you had, you put in two bathrooms. What other things did, were you asked to do? And what were people, what were people expecting of you? I mean, when, when, when you said you wanted to do something, didn't you know, well, it sounds like you knew that you had barriers in terms of the things that you're looking to do. I, I, I'm, I have to say, in all due respect, that I would have first looked to see whether or not there were things that I could do. And if I couldn't do them, I'm not sure that I would have gone ahead and spent $300,000. And, and so, I, I guess, my question is, why would you have done that? And, and was there something in what you were doing, what were you doing there, that made it profitable for you to continue in, in that vein? I mean-
So-
Let me, let me just, just say one more thing. I drove by your place three or four times after seeing your application. Saw nothing there, saw a locked door, no, no sign saying what it was, that that space was used for. And sort of didn't know whether or not anything was even going on there. So, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to put together a, a picture that I could sort of understand here.
So I can give you some background?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm looking for.
Absolutely. So just, just off of my career background and what it is that I do, I do operations management for different corporations. Since we started Remy Group, we've gotten corporate clientele, so this is now what we do. With that, I perform heavily on due diligence. Prior to even signing a lease, we spoke to the town and asked if we would need to do, if we would be able to do a function space in that unit, prior to any next steps. When we were told yes, we would merely need to go through the process of change of use, we opted into the lease. We would have never gone into a lease without getting a hearsay of a yes. You can do this in this space. We would have moved on to a different location, different town, elsewhere. From that moment, we moved forward, we signed the lease to secure the location and not lose it, went through the process of planning board for changing the use. There were some barriers there. There were miscommunications, lack of communications, not really having folks receptive to working with us. We met some challenges in that aspect. And I don't want to throw, you know, allegations out. But if you take a look at us, it can make a sense why certain people may have a certain aspect of, what we felt was some sort of a prejudice.
I don't, I don't think you should use those terms. Nobody would prejudiced you, I'm sure.
We felt, that's how we felt at the time, with the barriers that were being thrown our way.
But just, just, just to, just to reiterate what you wanted to mention, this has been a money pit for us, right? Just, just, just to speak on that. It has been a money pit. It hasn't been something in our portfolio that's been profitable. However, we felt if we showed the initiative, and we showed the responsibility in the sense that we're committed to the town, even though we're losing money, maybe they'll do the good thing in the future and cut us a break, so we could be profitable. The last, the last event that we did make, just to give you a sense of how much money that we could garner, was over $60,000 within the event. And this was without the alcohol at first, right? And, comparable to other units and other locations, they're doing, they're doing events for maybe $10,000, maybe $6,000. But the clientele that we have will enable us to bring in that type of clientele. And, and pretty much, I've said this to my sister before, to, to, you know, I'll bankrupt on this situation and walk away from it. However, we feel that it is profitable and we could turn it around. So that's basically it. We've, we've paid rent here close to three years, haven't turned a dollar from it, and we're still here, humbly, looking to just, hey, help us out, give us a bone. But every time we do come into this situation here, it's, we don't believe in the business, we don't do this. And that's fine. I mean, I, I haven't gotten to this place in life by, you know, just letting no stop me from moving forward. And, and it's not something combative, it's not something contentious. We're just looking for an opportunity to, a rightful opportunity within the town of Stoughton, just to have a rightful business. That's about it. And if we could do something better, if you guys could see different things that we could perform better, we're open to having that conversation as well. But there's been no demerits, there's been no citations, there's been no, you know, complaints from what we've been doing thus far. And we're just looking for an opportunity just to be competitive within the market. And I think that it's just been a miscommunication of sorts. And I feel that, you know, we are in the right place, and if we have the right conversation, we could steer the ship in the right direction.
Now, I, I wasn't expecting to go down part of the hole there that, that we might have gone down. I, I mean, because that would have, if, if we were going to have a conversation about other issues, we should have two sides on that.
Correct.
I was, my, my question was really more toward, what were you doing that you, you could capture money to keep yourself going? And I guess, do you have other locations where you are doing business now?
Correct.
And, you know, if, you mentioned Brockton as a, as a place that, that had, has venues similar to yours, that apparently is willing to do that. I guess I might have gone there instead of doing what you were doing. And I, I guess, I'm more toward where Mr. McCrisky is. We have rules on what it is that we do in terms of giving out liquor licenses that, that have food with the liquor, and they're not just to, I guess, satisfy a demand that, that may or may not be there. I mean, I'm not, I'm not criticizing your, your vision. I'm having a hard time understanding why, why it's two or three years into the process, and, and you're, you're coming here now to try to get a variance for something that, that we, I don't know how we would, how we would handle that. That's why I asked, you know, was there a liquor license application in that you were looking to do something? I mean, you're, this is pre-application. I, I don't-
We, we do have an application completed.
Okay.
We do have an application completed. When we had the occupancy permit, the application was completed with Kelly Johnson down in the main office.
Uh-huh.
But this, we're told, is part of the process, being that we have the limitations now that we're finally open and don't have the full kitchen. I can show you some footage of inside, if you'd like to see of an event set up?
I don't think that'll be necessary-
Okay.
... right now.
Let me, let me go a little further here. On, in your code of conduct here, you, you have, you have things that I don't really understand. You, you use the word renter, people renting space? Are they renting it from you? Is it like a, a contract for two or three hours, or is it two or three days, or what is it? And there's another thing in here. Well, why don't you answer that question first?
So it is per event?
Okay.
So our services do include an event designer who works with the client to design and decorate the venue as they so choose. Sometimes the planner is able to connect them to catering vendors, is able to connect them to furniture vendors, in order to have the aesthetics that they seek out.
So you have a space which you, which you rent out to people to do things that they wish to do in there. And you, are you going to be the holder of a liquor license for that? And are you planning to do the liquor service? The reason I ask that question is that in the middle of, of these dos and don'ts, you seem to indicate that someone else can come in and sell liquor?
No, we would, as we're understanding, the location holds the license. Is that right? The location holds the license. So these, we do have bartending staff that work in our other locations that are certified to serve, therefore they would be on site to manage that.
So they would be doing the-
Our-
Sales?
Our, our team.
Okay.
Just for the record, I know that other locations were mentioned. We have a design team, and we have relationships with not just government professionals and just other high-profile clientele. We truly believe that in comparison to those other businesses that you do have, that we would be able to shed a more positive light in the Stoughton town. It's not to say that the clientele we have in Boston were jumping for joy to come to Stoughton, but with the relationships that we've in place, they're willing to. So from a positive aspect, it would definitely put the town in a more positive light in the eyes that see it as not the most, you know?
We, we came into a similar situation in one of our projects in Atlanta. What we did propose and were able to come into a common ground was maybe a probational period, just so we able to demonstrate to the town what we're able to do, how it's profitable, with no issues, with no problems of sorts. And then from that probational period, then move forward. I'd probably propose something like that to the town, wherein, since, you know, it's a middle ground, you guys get a sense to see what's going on, to get a sense, hey, there's been no issues, it's been two, three months, whatever the case may be, whatever the time period allotted is. And if we could function within those parameters, then we could move forward. I'm just trying to get this situated in a, in a way where everyone walks out of here, and everybody feels good about the entire situation. I, I don't want to move where it's, we're being contentious or bumping heads. And I'm definitely open to having a conversation and being able to do whatever it needs to get done for us to be profitable, like stated. The numbers don't make sense, believe me. I've been back and forth with my accountant many times about why is this project still going on? It's been a money pit. However, I feel confident that we could turn it around. There's different business things and business plans that we have in play that we feel confident about. And, and if given the right leeway, in a sense, I just feel like we're behind the eight ball for no reason. It's not like we've been bad, and we've been on punishment, and we're trying to get on the good side. I feel like we're just, you know, just trying to get a fair shot. And we're willing to do what's necessary, so the town feels comfortable in doing so.
All right. I'm going to say a little something, and then Mr. Caltor has-
I have a question too.
What's that, Deb?
I have a question as well.
Okay. I've followed this a little bit. There was a little bit of pushback on your side. I mean, it wasn't all, we're all in. In this town, there's regulations. We have to follow them. So don't the other boards that we appoint. It's great to use the word "give us a break." Where does the break start? Everybody that comes in and says, they got this, she's pointing out another place that we were at for a party, and look what they're doing. They went through what they went through, and they did it proper. So I, I don't want to point fingers at other people that you're better than them, and your clientele's higher, because everybody wants to do well.
Correct.
When you were first going, there was a lot of pushback on the fact that you didn't want to have a dumpster. That's part of the regulations to do what you're doing. And if you got a COC in this town without having a dumpster, then shame on the group that let it go. Because everybody else has to adhere to dumpster regulations. Some people even get it a little further. They have to enclose it. It can't be seen. It's got to be accessible. It's got to be dumped. It's got to be maintained. It's got to be washed. That's a big thing, because there is some residential homes that back up to that and around that area. So I understand where you're coming from. But this sounds like just a, an empty hall. People are coming in. I don't even know if you're there when it's going down. You have people that are running it. We have, I have nothing here that when we do stuff that says insurance, who's on, who's covered on the workman's comp, everything. You want to be on, you want to set your own terms of probation. We can't do that. It's not in the policy. You have to go by the policy that was voted. We can't keep changing things to try to fit something that- We can't keep changing things to try to fit something that... Does it belong there? I don't know. That's up to you. But this doesn't spell it out hard, and it's not something that we've done or anybody else. They're all looking at the regulations that they have to follow in order to get this through. I'm not a big fan of amending certain things, to twist something in there, and then if something happens, we're in the lawsuit with you, because we approved it, because it's a waiver. That puts everybody up against the wall. And I'll tell you something right now, color means nothing. There's no color barrier. I don't see it. My best friend is black. He's been my best friend since fourth grade, and I don't see any color with him. I might not see him for months, and when I see him, it's like seeing my brother. That's all I got to tell you. My best friend is black. So, I don't look at you different. I look at you as two people who wanted to start out doing something, and I couldn't believe, I drove by that a couple of times, going to pick stuff up in my dump truck, and I was like, what's going on with that space? I says, is there anything? It just never looked like it was open. That's all I got to say. Mr. Coulter, I'll go to you now, and then we'll look at something. Oh, sorry, Deborah. Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Chair Carrera, and thank you, Mr. Coulter. I have no additional questions for the owners. I am, once we close the public hearing...
It's not a public hearing.
Well, once, I have comments for my fellow board members regarding, directionally, as long as we are, we're following our regulations, and we're not picking and choosing, some we let, give the variance, and others we don't, without reason, then I think we should hold pat with our regulation, with our bylaws, because we said it for a reason, right? We're in the process of evaluating our downtown. That includes the traffic, that includes parking, that includes licenses, and the whole bit. So, it's a whole, it's the whole, not just one thing. And if we start not following true to our original intent, then that's when we're going to start having the breakdown. It has nothing to do with these owners, but it has a lot to do with downtown, especially on Washington Street. We just have issues right now that we haven't worked through. So, that's what I would like to say to my fellow board members. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll just be brief, and just say that I appreciate, first of all, as we've been speaking, I've kind of been looking guys up on the Secretary of State's website, and you've been very interesting for a very long time. You guys have done a couple of different LLCs, corporations. It sounds like you have an organizational structure that's right now, I mean, more complicated than I think I could probably round my mind around. Seems like hard-working people who are trying to fulfill the American dream, and for that, I want to be able to help you. Just in general agreement with the rest of the board, what you're experiencing is a lot of friction. I think it's because we have, this is a variance to a policy, and it's going to be friction. It's going to take a little time to kind of get through it. We've had, I think, only one application go through, and that took like six months and like four meetings. So, the fact is, as painful as it might be, it's really just an effort to do our due diligence, which I'm sure you respect and understand.
Absolutely.
So, but there's, I like to see people succeed as much as possible. I think we all do, and I would love to be able to see that happen here as well. And I think that everybody wants to see that. But what that looks like specifically might require a little more information, a little bit further examination, so, and there might be a little bit of negotiation. On the one hand, I would love to be able to, right now, make a motion, and I will. I don't know where it's going to go, but it might also be wise for us to continue this and maybe spend a little time just making sure that, maybe through the town manager, just get a better sense, and I'll do this only if the board agrees, get a better sense of sort of the operations of this, what it looks like, how it... This might be something we typically do more during the licensing time period, but it'd be good to just have like a little bit of back and forth, where we sort of understand where you guys are coming from. As I mentioned, there's some things, for me, that was just a little bit vague. I'd love to have my head around a little bit better, and we can just have that discussion. You guys, at your convenience, discuss this with the town manager, and we can put together a plan that the board, you know, could understand and would ultimately approve. Would you be amenable to maybe getting on a future agenda to discuss this a little bit further?
Absolutely. I think that's a fair assessment.
Okay. So, then I'll make the motion, and we'll see what the board, if they agree with me, that we direct the town manager to work with the members of the, I want to make sure I'm saying this right, Canvas Events, Mr. and Mrs. Remy, to just better flesh out what this business would look like, and to perhaps find any sort of, any place where we're not in agreement, and find alignment. So, that's my motion.
Mr. Cavy has made that motion. Is there a second to it?
Mr. Vice Chairman?
I have no seconds, so the motion is dead. I'll take Mr. Coulter's.
I just wanted to bring some clarity, since I was the only one in this room who has spoken at length with this group. That's what I've wanted to comment on, because I feel the need to be transparent. So, this couple called me a month ago, perhaps?
Yes.
Maybe a month ago, is that correct?
Yep.
Asking what the process was to get a full liquor license. And just so you know, I don't have a vote. I don't have a horse in this race, but I give guidance as town manager on the policies of this committee. And so, I advised them that there was a strict policy on liquor licenses, and I explained them the process to apply for a variance, and I recommended to them that they come to Town Hall, they read the policy, they study the policy, they read the variance process, understand the various process, and at the appropriate time, come here, not with an application, but to seek guidance. And I think they've received that here this evening. I want to give you some background, members, on what I also told them, in the spirit of transparency. This town, years ago, had a very serious problem with out-of-town sponsored raves. Hundreds, hundreds, sometimes a thousand people, coming to a rented, open space, and causing significant danger to this public of people driving home at midnight, one in the morning, two in the morning, through town, out to the expressways, all from out of town. And after a number of incidents involving law enforcement, and ambulances, and injuries, and arrests, this board, in their wisdom, passed a very comprehensive policy against that type of behavior. They also provided for a variance, which is an exception, to people, applicants who may get caught up in a process, not in a profile, but a process whereby it looks like they may, may be hosting a rave. And the symptoms of that are typically a business where the primary focus is an open warehouse where alcohol is sold, and which occupy the building until late hours into the evening. And so, our first application for a variance was from a delightful couple who were from out of town, who own a photo studio, and they were just barely making it as a very high-end, it sounds like they invested the same as you invested, in a building that needed a lot of work, in a high-end photo studio, and they were looking to complement their base business with occasional events, small events, three separate rooms, one hosted 50 people, one hosted 35, one hosted 15. And they laid out their business plan very carefully and in a very detailed way, and they walked away from this hearing sometimes with the same disappointed faces that you have right now. And they were diligent, and they were persistent, and they came back, and they built relationships with this board and others, and they gained the confidence and the support of a board that supported their request for variance, and I think to a person, they would all say that these are absolute wonderful people, great additions to our community, a very successful business, and we're proud to have them. But it has to be the exception. I'll close by saying, I think the problem here is a lack of communication. What I'm hearing, and I think I could describe your business model better than you, what I'm hearing is you've got an open space that is custom-designed to the theme of your client. Because I've heard you say you've got subcontractors who provide furniture...
Correct.
...and music, and fixtures, and that it looks like a custom-designed studio for a theme event. Is that true?
Hence the name Canvas. It's a play on canvas. You have a blank canvas, and an artist would come in and style it accordingly.
So, is that true?
Correct. It's true.
So, I think I've described your business model better than you.
If you're looking for another job, I could, you know...
If you come back, if you take Mr. Cavy's advice, and you're persistent, and you come back, I would suggest that we talk again first, as I did with the person who applied for the variance, and let's provide some clarity as to your business model. Not this evening, it's late in the night, but to provide some clarity. I'm happy to meet with you. This board is very pro-business, and this board is, in our community, is very diverse. So, we like to support businesses owned and operated by people of color. I'll say that publicly. I think everyone would agree with that. So, we would welcome you to come back. I'd be honored to work with you. I will tell you personally, if the conditions under which your business chooses to operate doesn't meet the conditions of the variance, but I'd also be happy to tell you what you would need to do in order to meet the conditions of the variance, as we did the previous applicants who were granted a variance. How many times would you say that they were here?
Six.
Six times?
Wow.
And each time, we became better friends?
And they took everything that everybody had to offer to hot.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
They did as far as they could to make it fit, and then when it was over and done with it, it fit, and it's good. I can't steer you, but the town manager, that's his power, to work with you if he wants to. Otherwise, we sit here and we just go, you got to prove to us. But we can't broker deals beyond a voted document that has been, it's legal.
Understood.
It doesn't work that way in the world anymore, especially when we're all become liable to it. We're policy setters, we approve different things, but when liquor's involved, the state's involved, insurance is involved, and you have to sell to us. And I know she's mad, I can see the way she's sitting there and shaking, I can feel it. But I'm just trying to soften you up.
I appreciate that, though.
Just be gentle. It ain't going to be that bad. You've come this far, you've come through the hottest pot.
And we appreciate the conversation.
I do.
We've been in this room before, and it's now going on year four, so it's just, as he stated, a money pit. So, sitting here...
Well, it's the first time I've seen you. You might have sat in this room with planning board or something, but...
Planning board, correct.
And I know an awful lot about planning and zoning and stuff. I've served on them, so I know when it's a time to lean, and when it's a time that you have to follow the course.
And I appreciate that, yeah.
All right.
I'm just tired, you know? I just feel like it's been a long draw with this particular business.
I know.
So, that's the frustration.
It's getting this close. I swear to God. Mr. McCrisky, sure.
Thank you. I've been to a similar party that you described, and it was two towns over. It was a warehouse, and there was an event. You didn't know you were in a warehouse, I'll tell you. I mean, there was backdrops, it was a political event, there was sheeting up there that looked like you were looking out at Capitol Hill and so forth. It was a nice event. But I want to concur with Mr. Roberts, is that the reason that we have this here, we cannot be going and saying, okay, well, what can we do to pick out little things so that we could fit this? We have a written policy, we have bylaws in the Chapter 138 of Alcohol Rules set by the state. The variance is there for something that is just completely different, not that we go back and go back and forth to nitpick and see how we can find out to fit this in and give it to them. It's got to be something. I'm open, but I don't have enough information right now to vote for it, so that's what I said earlier. I just, the presentation, I understand. I'd like to see more.
Sure. I understand that, and I respect that.
Yeah, and whatever way you can do it, and what other committees may or may not have done, I just mentioned to the town manager, I've said this for some time, folks, I think we need a policy here that if a license is needed by this board, it doesn't get heard by anybody else until we're inclined to give a license, because it's not fair, the system's wrong, you know, to get them to come before a planning board when we may say no to the liquor license, why should they go through all that?
Exactly.
All right? So, we need to change that on our end, because I don't think, and I've said it before, and it might have been this case, because I heard of something similar, or it might have been this one, and I heard some of the things that happened at that meeting, and if we're not going to vote a liquor license, why would you even have them come before that board?
Exactly.
And then, so, our processes are not what they should be. They need to be smoother, they need to be self-explanatory, an applicant needs to know the steps that they're going to take. And the first one is coming with "we," because we have the most authority over that area, and it just doesn't make sense. But I'm open to anything that gives me a better idea of what's going on, because I'm a stricker for the rules. We all know that. I appreciate that.
I'm comfortable that Mr. Coulter will either tell them they're in the right line or they're in the wrong line.
Well, let's say it right out. My colleagues, you know how I felt about the last one. I was not in favor of it. Adamantly opposed to it. I voted for it.
Right. Deborah?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you very much for presenting your business model to us, but I wanted to also say and ask the question, I believe in transparency, we all believe in transparency. Are our bylaws still posted on our website? And this applies to everyone, so we want everyone to know what is our tagline? Facts or friendly? These are the bylaws, and it applies to everyone, and we want to make sure that everything is above board, and everyone has the same information. Maybe planning board, I'm sure you've done this, Mr. Coulter, but the planning board has to be well-versed in our bylaws. So, for a business owner to get this far in the game, and still there's some ambiguity, especially when it's non-conforming use, you know, it's, we're going to go through this, it's going to be, we're following the bylaws, and I think that is the best practice.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, one last thing. It's documented somewhere in the records that, and I believe it may have been Mr. Gito years back, that we had talked about this on the board, and we had this structure that was set to go in place, whether, I've been on and off and on and off so many times, who knows when it took place, but, and it was just for that reason, is to come up with the protocol on how departments would act. We had this happen, if you recall, by the planning board, that allowed a use to be changed on Wyman Street, and they made the comment, if you're not going to use it this, why don't you make it a little barroom? The person invested hundreds of thousands of dollars to make it a barroom, had no commitment on a license. So, I think that we need to buckle down and come up with this process so that, you know, people don't have that problem. We were forced into that vote. We were forced into that vote. I didn't want, that one I didn't want there, I still don't think it's, it's a lot of traffic there, it just changed the whole neighborhood there, if you want to call it the neighborhood, the business neighborhood, it changed it completely. There are cars sometimes parked in other parking lots, you know, or cars parked in driveways... driveways. I mean, they're thriving, but they're causing other problems. And that's what the people that live in that area shouldn't have to deal with. So I, I think this is another one that we need to, and I'm sorry that if it may be a little longer, I'm open, but I'm also, here's where the problem comes in, I'm old, older. I've lived here my whole life and I'm seeing my community change in ways that don't make me happy.
I understand.
I want everybody to thrive. I want everybody to succeed. I don't care who you are, where you're from, but I want to maintain the integrity of the people that elect me. You know, to make sure that our neighborhoods don't get changed, that we have thriving businesses that are making our town better.
Correct.
Just trying to find the back door in to get it done. That's where I come from.
And I'd like to add one more thing on what you just said. We just want to be here as patrons that respect the community. I think that we walked into a situation not really understanding the history of it. And now that I'm hearing exactly what you guys been through, we could be a little bit more empathetic on that. And we definitely respect that. And we just want to play by the rules. We're not looking for any preferential treatment. We're not looking for you guys to break the rules for us. We just want to be made sure that we're going about it the right way so we can get to the right conclusion. And we're not trying to, from what you said, it's like someone opened something and then swindled something else into it. We're not looking to do that. We're looking to be very transparent.
But if you went through that, wouldn't you be defensive?
Correct. If I was on your board, absolutely.
Exactly.
So I understand that.
Exactly, so...
Now that I see what you guys are saying, it's making more sense.
I'd love to see some pictures of some of your events.
Absolutely.
I have no problem. I've never looked at the unit. I know where it is. I frequent the restaurant down the, at the other end of the building every morning. So I'd love to walk in and see what you have there and, and then pictures of what you've made that look like.
Correct.
Because I am, that to me, that's innovation. When you're picking something like that and you can take a vacant unit and make it look like an oasis and people are enjoying themselves?
Correct.
Hey, you know, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Vice Chair? Mr. Chairman Kavy has some info he wants to do.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to, to make a motion, because I think we're in a good place now where we kind of know where our next, next steps are. And I, I think that there, it's a positive, very positive direction. For tonight, though, rather than approving or denying it, I'd like to make a motion to take no action tonight, so your application's not been approved or denied. So we'll just move on to the next step here. So motion to take no action tonight.
So made.
Is that a second to this?
I made the motion.
You made the motion. I'll second it. Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Lou? Were, were you an aye or, or no?
Otherwise.
It's a motion to take no action tonight.
Four to one.
And Mr. Vice Chairman, just to reiterate, I'm open to the potential applicants if they'd like to sit down and discuss it in detail.
Thank you. And I will now give the motion back.
We're gonna have a new tradition of having to wrestle this back from you. But, okay, so thank you very much, everybody. Thank you again for, for your time and...
Thank you for your time as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Make her smile, will ya?
Be well, be well. Okay, so it is now 9:45 and I will take a, accept a motion to adjourn.
So made.
So made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Mr. Carrera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Have a great night, everybody.